Good evening, welcome to the August 12th workshop meeting for Pasco City Council. We have agendas available on the corner desk over here if you'd like to follow along, or we also have a more detailed packet available through the city's website. And we also televise our meetings live on that website as well as through Charter Cable, Channel 191, and those are of course available for review later on. If you have any cell phones, I'd ask you to mute those so that the meeting isn't interrupted. And if you get a chance to speak with council, you'd come to the podium up here. And if you share your name with us, we'd be thankful for our record keeping. With housekeeping taken care of, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alvarado.
Present.
Barajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Here.
Martinez.
Present.
Milney.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Watkins.
Here.
Seven present, Mr. Mayor.
And if you join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice.
Item three, verbal reports from council members. Anybody attended a meeting in our event they wish to share with council? And Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items I'd like to share. One was I had the pleasure of joining one of our police captains on a National Night Out to go through a couple of neighborhood block parties, I guess, for lack of a better term. It's wonderful to see the community coming out and just each area was different and really reflected that, the characteristics of that neighborhood, and it was awesome. It was really cool to see that and to see how, to see so many of our wonderful community members celebrating. And then of course to end at Memorial Park where the city's function was going on. So I'm sure other council members might have something else to add to that, but certainly I enjoyed it and really appreciate the support. The other item I'd like to discuss is last Wednesday I attended the My Try 2030 Life Workshop. And so that was an all-day brainstorming session discussing what can we do as a Tris Cities as part of the regional efforts, the regional chambers' efforts to come together with more of a community-wide set of visioning. And so we had a lot of discussions. I was told not to share too many spoilers, but I'll just say one thing, turns out an aquatics facility was really high up on everyone's list. So just something I noticed. So I did attend as a private citizen, not as council member, but worth sharing that that was a wonderful exercise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Others, Mr. Mil.
Yeah, I also attended the get out the vote night and it was really good. Again, I enjoyed all the different parties. On Wednesday night, I attended with the Pasco School District. They had an event going on and as far as basically to plan out the third high school, it doesn't do with the bonds, but they want to make sure that when the funding eventually does go through, that they would be prepared. So I volunteered for that and more meetings. And then I also obtained the Pasco Chamber lunch today, which was really good.
Thank you. And Mr. Ruben? I'm still getting used to this system.
Yeah, it looks very sharp. Yes, I had a busy week last week and very happy to report. A couple of things from the Greater Columbia Carnival Communities of Health. On Tuesday, actually on Wednesday, we had a supportive housing meeting. They have brought together various agencies and folks who are wanting to solve some of the homelessness issues. And so it's just various folks that they convened, they have done a summit. And so they invited me to just give an update from Pasco's perspective, that we also had some staff there to back me up in case I got anything wrong. And they also had as a guest, the gentleman who spoke with us from Catholic Charities. So really great to see some community support around just some future projects that are going to address some of the great needs that we have in our city. And then on Friday, we had a community resilience campaign meeting for the same organization. We're wanting to do a test project in Yakima to just bring the message about resiliency and ACEs and how to overcome childhood adverse childhood experiences. And then on Thursday, through my day job, but kind of with some, I guess, I don't know how to say, just relationships I've been building here in the city, we were able to bring a city planner, a senior planner, Jacob Gonzalez, to come speak with some kids. And we had this build your own city that was on the front page of the paper. Kids were able to kind of play city planners. They had four teams, what was the Home Builders Association, the Commerce, Chamber of Commerce, and you know, City Services. It was really cool to see them interact and just see them how their minds work. They were super sharp just in being able to, we had judges, so they had to answer to judges. And it was just really great to see them just, their minds going and defending where they put things and why they put them there. So it was really great. I'm very thankful for the planning department to lend us their city planner for a couple hours to have just such a great experience. And then just top off the night, just with visiting the Benton Franklin Transit Board that night.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. And just you sharing the video too, it looked like a combination of Monopoly and SimCity and the kids doing. And then also a night out, particular treat was Ms. Barajas' neighborhood participated in that evening and got to meet some of her neighbors as well. Ms. Barajas?
Yes, so thank you, Mayor. First time doing a block party in that neighborhood. Just moved into the area seven months ago, more or less. I used it as an opportunity to meet my neighbors. Great bunch of people. They went all out. They had a water slide. Thank you, staff that was there. Also wanted to share that, as you know, last week was National Health Center Week. And so through my day job, I attended three different events where backpacks were donated to the kids, free physicals, immunizations, you name it. These kids had help. And so I think in the three different cities that I visited, there was about 3,000 kids that were helped, all receiving school supplies from the HMO, the MCLs that participated and the different agencies that coordinated all the events. Thank you. Police Department was there, Fire Department was out there as well. Yeah, just wanted to share that. But again, thank you, everyone that came to all the block parties, council members. The community does see that we're participating, we're being more engaged within our areas, our streets. And so just wanted to tell you guys all, thank you for connecting with the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Serrano?
Thank you. I too was able to attend National Night Out. Unfortunately, I didn't get the A1 escort. I risked it and went solo. But I do have to thank, I believe it was Mr. Brinkerhoff who had the one that was over off Sandifer, right in my neighborhood. As Blanch mentioned, this one had a water slide, they had lawn games, they had the Boy Scouts to do the flag ceremony, they were grilling and eating, of course, with the hundred and whatever degrees it was, ice cream and other sorts of treats. So just to see, as everyone's mentioned, to see the neighborhoods come together and really celebrate being a true neighborhood, you know, it was real Americana. And those are the types of things that make me proud, not to just be a council member, but to be a citizen of the city. And it's awesome to participate. And of course, we'd be remiss to not mention Councilwoman Barajas' birthday that was last week. She somehow has gotten younger over the years. I don't know how it's happened. I'll have to ask her the trick.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. No more verbal reports. We'll go on to item, section four on the agenda. This evening, we're kicking off with an agreement update with Franklin County Historical Society. Mr. Zabel?
So good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a periodic update, a renewal of the agreement with Franklin County Historical Society. And the agreement provides a small, but much-needed amount of funding to assist the society in providing historical information to the community. One of the more visible examples that we see every day in City Hall is our display case just down the hall here. So staff recommends renewal of the agreement. And we do have our executive director here this evening, Dr. Sherman. Any questions, the council?
So we have two ways to go on this. Ninety-five-hundred a year for the next five years, okay with that? And we also have the director here to good see you, Sarah. I know that he's attended a couple of events the past year and just would also commend the Historical Society to know one's past is also to know one's future. And the Historical Society, through that combination of a little bit from a city and then also a variety of benevolent donors and other sources, provides some great value for our county. So I think and look forward to putting that on the agenda for adoption.
I was gonna mention that we did have a chat just before the meeting and discussed our more recent meeting with the Colville Tribe. And the executive director shared with me, they have a considerable amount of material from the Palouse Band, which is part of the Colville Confederated Tribe. So they, this was kind of their area in here. So we already got to jump ahead for that, so that's really exciting.
Thanks for the addition. Okay, well, we're gonna put that one on the agenda, we're gonna move on through. And item B, we're gonna talk about fireworks. And I believe it is Captain Harpster that's gonna be speaking this evening, or is there any introduction, Mr. Zabel?
I'll just, if I could just lead it off. So we have been working on this issue for, well, we provided council a preliminary report right after the fourth, and then the codes and fire and police have all been kind of working, doing a little bit further, deeper analysis. You'll see some of that tonight in the PowerPoint. And we have some recommendations, at least from a regulatory standpoint and as well as outreach standpoint. With that, I'll turn it over to Captain Harpster to kick it off and Deputy Chief Dunbar.
All right, good evening. So we're back here to talk about fireworks. So first of all, I'm gonna start out with just a little bit of history. So we're gonna go back a little bit to 1996. And that's when the city of Pasco, Franklin County, Kennewick, all passed an ordinance prohibiting use of personal fireworks. This was an ordinance that was passed as a result of significant number of structural fires, wildline fires that occurred during fireworks sale period beginning June 28th and then ending on July 5th. Most of those fires were determined to have been caused by the discharge of illegal fireworks by citizens discharging personal fireworks. So what changed? In 2018, May of 18, revision was made to that ordinance and is summarized below. The sale of, the use of, the sale and use of consumer fireworks were defined by RCW 77136, which goes on to say, consumer fireworks means any small fireworks device designed to produce visible effects by combustion and blah, 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 blah. If you want to read it, I can pull it up for you. So then also, persons under the age of 16 may not possess, use, discharge, or transport consumer fireworks except under the supervision of an adult, which is 18 or older. Restrictions were on consumer fireworks where they can be discharged, restrict the sale of consumer fireworks to commercially zoned properties, and restricted dates and times of sale. And it also established licensing requirements, penalties, and safety considerations. So I'm gonna talk about, we're gonna talk about two things. We're gonna talk about Police Department and then Fire Department with my counterpart here. So effect on the Police Department. So prior to, and CFS, that is Calls for Service, prior to the 2018, we have our Calls for Service running, you know, 143, 115. And then the fireworks ordinance goes into effect and our Calls for Service jumped to 221. And then this last year, we had 252. Of course, now fireworks are legal, people are going to call and say, hey, they're using fireworks that are not legal, come deal with this issue. So what this is, this is a heat map of fireworks calls for service this year. And what you can see in the red area, that's where the most concentrated calls for service were. What this basically shows is this is a widespread problem. This is not an issue. This is not something that's just concentrated in one area of the city of Pasco. It's spread throughout. This may be a little bit easier to kind of demonstrate some of that. The darker blue areas there, this is the same calls for service this year, but it's by population density. So the darker blue sections on this map is where there's more dense population with calls for service. And then as it gets lighter, the lighter it gets, the fewer calls for service with population. So we have a couple of areas you can see where there are concentrated population centers, mainly in the downtown core, just on the other side of 395 as well. And then also, it gets a little bit lighter as you go up into the road, just to the west of the Road 68 area, north of the freeway. So how did we do this year, or the last couple of years? As I said before, 221 calls for service for us last year, 252 calls for service this year. Last year, we issued eight citations. This year, we made an effort, concentrated effort to really go out there and get more citations and, you know, catch the violators. We had 18. Last year, we didn't have any warnings. We weren't, well, we had warnings, we had a lot of warnings last year, but we didn't track it. This year, we tracked our warnings, we had 54 warnings that we issued. And those were people that, okay, we know that there's something going on here, but it's really hard, as some of you found, to actually pinpoint a violation there. And then just for a point of reference, for our crewing from the Police Department that day, we had 27 officers along with nine reserve officers assigned to patrol, to patrol function. And that was over two major fireworks events. And we ended up having about 14 hours of overtime during that time. And I'll let Ed talk about fire.
So on the fire side, anytime that we see people dealing with hot burning things, we're gonna see something go on. What this chart is, it's the last five years of the Pasco Fire Response. And you can see, one of the things that we discussed was, we've got two years of history with our fireworks being legal. If you look back five years ago, we had pretty steady, about 25, 26 calls for service. 2018, we almost doubled that, went up to 42. We had 17 fires, most of them related to fireworks issues. I believe, well, several of them were related to illegal fireworks. This year, kind of went back down to quote-unquote "normal." It's only two points in time, so you really can't draw a true trend on that. Hopefully, this is where it's going, but we'll see where that is. So we kind of got lucky a little bit. There was still a lot of illegal fireworks going off. Our guys were out patrolling, we weren't issuing citations, we notified these guys to take care of that. But just us being out and about, I think maybe to give some awareness and those kind of things. So we'll have to see what happens in 2020 to see what that trend is, if we're going up or down. Hopefully, depending upon where we go for the future. So again, 18, 42 total incidents, 17 fires, either brush or trash. Trash fires are people just disposing of their fireworks in their trash can, a couple hours later, their trash can's on fire. Never a good thing. We did have two building fires, both of, one was because they stacked their used fireworks against their house and it burned up the back of their house. Just not the best sense in disposing of stuff, so we made a concerted effort on that. One was illegal fireworks started a bush on fire that communicated into the house. So that's where we're at. Several other things, we had 14 EMS calls in that year. None were fireworks related, which still shocks me. That's one good trend that we have that's going through. As we move into last year, we cut the call volume down about 40%. Only four fires really that we could attribute to fires or fireworks. Two were brush fires, and then again, still two in a trash can. One was actually up on Wrigley, they did their fireworks, packed it up into the fire, into the trash can, went off to go watch our show down at Geesa Stadium. Fortunately, their neighbors were able to put it out, otherwise it would have probably done even more damage to their building. We didn't experience any building fires this year, which was good. Again, about the same number of EMS incidents, again, nothing from fireworks. It's better to be lucky than good any day, but one of these days, our luck's gonna run out with that. Richland really got hit hard with the fireworks this year with their significant loss, and I'll talk about that here in just a minute. So again, we're just kind of back down to status quo, our normal, everyday 17 or 18 calls. In the area, 2018, a little bit different, these two tables I'm gonna show for 18 and 19 are just a little bit different. Pasco, Richland, Kennewick all saw several fires. We had 19 as outlined, Richland had 39. They allow the same type of fireworks that we do. So that's kind of one of those things to consider. But they're in the area of West Richland that allows the aerials, the mortars. So I think that's where they have some issues that they're dealing with, which is where West Richland is listed there. Kennewick, which outlaws them totally, they haven't changed anything, same as Franklin County, they still had eight fires in their area. So even if you totally ban them, you're not gonna totally get away from them. Moving into this year, again, our fires dropped way down, almost to a third. Richland, they had fewer fires, but they had more significant ones. Two of them occurred almost at the same time, burned up a house as well as several RVs and all that kind of stuff. Both were linked to fireworks. So that's where we're at. Kennewick, again, down just a little bit, but they still had several fires in their jurisdiction. West Richland kind of stayed about the same, war zone. You wanna go out and watch the stuff? Have fun. So that's kind of where we're at for the responses from the fire.
Thank you. So community contact, I polled our officers and said, what were you, what were you hearing from the community out there when you were making contact with them? Most of them said, well, as I said here, the legal fireworks versus illegal fireworks, it is difficult to quantify. About 10% of the calls that we received were in reference to legal fireworks. The majority of the calls for service, though, about 75%, were not specific enough for officers to really locate the subjects involved to indicate an offender. And then like I said, we talked to the public, said, you know, find out what they were, what they were saying. And people generally stated they didn't know some of the fireworks were illegal and that they were illegal in Pasco, I don't know how they didn't know that, and expressed confusion as to which fireworks were illegal, or they did not know that there was even a $250 fine that was associated with that. So we did some brainstorming, talking about, you know, what can we do in light of our contact with the community that we, you know, how can we go forward from here? Mostly, it's gonna be on education. We're recommending that we're gonna do more, more frequent media campaigning, beginning in June, beginning June 26th, obviously, that's when, right before fireworks go on sale. And then we're gonna also have education to coincide with utility billing. Prior to sales of fireworks, we're gonna get a flyer out in the, we'd like to get a flyer out in the utility billing prior to July with that information about what's legal, what's not legal. And then we're also going to, at that same time, start hitting some of our social media with that same information. Both, it can be done on the City of Pasco's page, Facebook page, the Pasco Polices, and then also Pasco Fires. As I said, utility billing, insert. And then at each stand, we just wanna make sure that they are putting a prominent sign of the what's legal, what's not legal here in Pasco. And we'd also like for the retailers with every sale to hand out that same flyer, so that every single person that's purchasing fireworks here in Pasco is getting that information of what's legal and what's not legal. In addition to that, we'd also like to see a few more stands. Right now, there's only four stands per year that are allowed per ordinance. And what they do is three stands here in Pasco for the Fourth of July, and then one is saved for New Year's during that time period. We'd like to see that number increased, so that what we're thinking is that what else would actually help encourage and facilitate local fireworks sales. Instead of people saying, well, I'll just stop on the way home from work and I'll go over here. But if we can get more fireworks stands throughout the city, then possibly they would think, they would know, okay, I can go buy my fireworks here in Pasco. And of course, then they would be legal because they're buying them here in Pasco. We'd also are proposing that the, do increased inspections of each stand. Right now, they do inspect the stands for safety and to make sure that they're selling the proper fireworks. But we can, but what we can do is we can increase that frequency to a couple of times during the fireworks season. Each stand is getting inspected just to make sure that they're still compliant. And then this is based off of the map that you saw, they had the blue, the darker blue calls for service. And what we can, what we did this year is we had concentrated patrols that were just focused on fireworks, patrolling. Do the same thing again next year, but this way, we can use the data from the previous year, start their patrolling in those areas. And then, because that's where we can see, okay, historically, this is where we had calls for service, the higher calls for service. And from there, as the data changes on a daily basis, we can then address it from there. Okay? And that's all we have for you this evening.
I'll start off and just note too that, so if we've had now two years and we're seeing we're gonna need to manage our way through this, and the fundamental decision I believe we made was just outlining them wasn't working, but trying to make that distinguishing line of, and I think Chief Gier keeps making it as simple as possible, stuff that flies isn't cool in Pasco. And if we can keep doing that simple, consistent message, then, and I see that throughout here, that we might be able to manage it. And I also like the idea of increasing the number of sales of those managed, reasonable fireworks that don't fly around too much, as being the way through it. And I'm guessing the limit of four was probably back in 96 when Pasco was less than half of what it is.
I thought it was put into effect in 2018 with the ordinance.
Yeah, I tried to find the original piece of where that four came from, and it's just couldn't identify it.
And reasonable to adjust the number with the size of Pasco being what it is. Other thoughts, Ms. Barajas?
Yes, thank you. I was just writing down my thoughts. Thank you for the presentation, great information. And I would like to add a couple suggestions to your recommendations. Jim, early on in June, before school lets out, you might want to pass out flyers to the students before school is out and possibly partner with the school district or the schools and use our reader boards, send out the message about what is safe and what is not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Serrano?
All right, thank you. Couple questions. One of the things that you pointed, Captain Harpster, and thank you again for both of you for the presentation, was about 14 hours of OT for your units. Do you know where that sits on par compared to the past few years? Is that an uptick or?
I didn't go back and look at it, but those, that overtime was generally was because of extra patrols and officers that were on the special details, having to then hold over to do other enforcement activities.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then looking at the list of recommendations, nowhere do I see ban fireworks again. Can you speak to that?
If you ban the fireworks, we're still, you're still gonna get fireworks here in Pasco, I think we've shown that. So that's a decision that you're gonna have to make as a city council.
No, I appreciate that. I just say, I mean, I guess given my perspective, I've heard a lot of people say, just go back to the ban. And that's the same point that I make, is that, look, you know, I love the additional points of sale. So in theory, we'll have more contact to allow for more sales and purchases and consumption of legal fireworks. I'm hoping that that turns to be a trend, because I still, and I'll just show my hand here, I still support the sale and consumption of legal fireworks in the city. So that's my take, and I appreciate that you didn't call me crazy with your recommendations. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I do, I do think that the recommendations were, kind of cover a wide range of angles. And I think that's really kind of what it's gonna have to come down to, to, you know, try to take various approaches to this, you know, it could be a potentially dangerous... You know, it could be a potentially dangerous issue for someone losing their home, you know, because of a neighbor or because of somebody not following the, the, um, the rules, and um, one, one of the things I didn't see in the recommendation, and I don't know if this is something, uh, certainly something that wouldn't be popular, but uh, I, I do feel like two hundred and fifty dollars and with a very low probability of getting caught, did not seem like a big deterrent for folks. Um, I did some, just, uh, you know, quick research and saw some compar- comparable cities that, you know, do a lot higher of, of, and in, in jail time, which I wouldn't, uh, be in favor of, but uh, for, for those who are, you know, uh, you know, really breaking the law or are distributing, um, you know, in, in, um, in a way that shouldn't be, not, not that that's necessarily the case here. Uh, but I don't know, perhaps in the future, e- even if council would be even interested in this, but um, adding, adding kind of more uh, like a higher deterrent, uh, fine for something like this, where, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars, you know, okay, that's not a huge deal. We had fun and, you know, that's probably the cost of the fireworks themselves, and the, the risk is not even a hu- you know, huge 'cause there's not enough patrolling, uh, for the number of folks that were, were fined, so that's just, like, that would be my thought.
I, and perhaps I'll need some help from Mr. Ferguson, but I'm channeling my experience and inner Mr. Kerr and talk in the past about it, and we, it's not that, for past fifteen years, we've gone around with this and we actually went from a, a more stringent fine, but it required police officer actually witnessing things, higher dollars to our more, if, uh, to a lower amount, but the burden for proof, I believe, was less. Now, Mr. Ferguson, am I misremembering, or is, is that consistent with what your, your memory is?
It's exactly like something Mr. Kerr would say, so uh, I would echo that, no. That, uh, I think there's a, a lot of correlation there, because uh, obviously, the more punitive that you go, uh, with regard to, uh, the violation, uh, the more, um, uh, you're going to have to show that you have a connection, uh, or be able to prove, 'cause that burden of proof is gonna raise up. So as you go from infractions and classes of infractions, uh, it's gonna go up, uh, it, it's still gonna be, um, it's just gonna be more difficult to prove, so.
If I also recall too, that the, the infractions, not just for fireworks, but for a variety of things, was the two hundred and fifty threshold, and it would not be impossible to change it for fireworks in particular, but it might be something that we have to look at, the schedule of fines across the board.
Yeah, as, as I understand, or as I recall, I think that's in our code, so uh, that two fifty is something that seems to be the, the status for our code.
Maybe the question of that is, and that has not been adjusted for some time, but if that, but that might be adjusted for, for inflation, so to speak, uh, maybe someone will look and look at that.
Absolutely.
Uh, Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, excuse me, I'm Skinnies, this is Mr. Maloney, then Mr. Martinez.
Either, either way, I'm, um, thank you for the presentation, and um, I, I think the real key point I saw on this was over the last two years, um, we've really had a better rate, um, than most of the surrounding community. Now, again, two points does not make a, a large trend here, but the, the sample size is fairly large, there's a lot of incidences and a lot of calls in, in all of our communities. So that is, that is a little bit of heartening, it's, so it may not be a trend, but I, I see that as, 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 as positive news. So I believe the best way to fix the behavior is to direct contact wherever possible in this case. Uh, is there any way we can have non-uniformed officers making contact in some fashion? I know that, um, for issuing citations, there's a specific, uh, there, there's undoubtedly some specific requirements for that, and certainly, we don't wanna put any of, any, any, um, um, any folks of ours at some risk by contacting folks who may not be interested in complying. Um, but is there any way we can, we do something similar to code enforcement, or what options do we have that are not uniformed police officers?
Uh, well, we could have non-uniformed police officers that would then issue that, that citation. Um, we can definitely look at it and see what our staffing levels are for those, for those evenings, uh, and, and kind of go from there.
So then, again, I think the direct contact, as we're seeing, that, so that might be of the what's changing behaviors, uh, warnings are good, um, if they're effective. Um, getting away with it is, um, not great for, uh, future compliance. Um, another question I had was, we had about, if I understood correctly, seventy-five percent of the calls uh, regarding potential illegal fireworks were, uh, did not have enough information to follow up with contact, is that, did I understand that correctly?
Correct.
Is there a possibility that we can have some sort of dedicated line where we route, uh, fireworks, uh, reports, um, to that maybe has some prompts saying, we need this, we need this, we need this, before we can take action? Um, would that, could, could that help our, um, our residents file reports?
Well, that's something we could work with CCOM, our dispatching service with, um, you know, they take in, they're the call takers. Um, so we could work with them and see what information that they're getting that we might need, or they're not getting that we might need. And if that's something that's in their scope of work.
So it's something like that where we can make sure those contacts are coming through, I'm, I'm sure there's a lot, number of frustrated community members who said, well, I, I made the phone call and no one came, well, there might be a very good reason why no one came, but that's, they may not, that might not have translated back very well. And this is my last thought and suggestion on this would be, um, if there's any possibility, we can ask vendors in other cities to perhaps, um, if anybody from Pasco is buying fireworks, perhaps they can get one of our flyers as well, so someone stopping by Richland or, um, could maybe get one of our flyers. That may not be logistically possible, but I'd be interested to work with the City of Richland on that, if, if we could.
Okay. I'm, and just augment, uh, two things, I think one of the, anecdotally, some of the frustrations that I've seen online were, what do you mean, they didn't see it, I watched them and it was obvious to me, or that when the police officer left, the fireworks started back up. So I think those both kind of hew to, towards that thing that gets to be a bit of a joke, maybe, that the police officer does spot, but know that they're gonna have to go away to another place, and that's always hard to manage. Uh, the second part too, about inner communities, the, uh, the option might also be to, if, if, notwithstanding the war zone that is West Richland, perhaps, this is a subject that at least Kennewick and Ri- uh, Kennewick and Richland and Pasco might wanna talk about, uh, more, uh, to be consistent. Uh, then again, if Kennewick is still in a, a mode of no fireworks whatsoever, there, there's that, there's that rub. Um, Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I had such mixed emotions on the Fourth of July, because I love fireworks. And, um, as I was sitting on my back porch waiting for our show over at the Geesa Stadium, um, you know, it was really mixed emotions for me, because it was nothing more American than to see your community get together and seeing people do things right. Um, and what was really, um, I think had a big impact was, now that most of our communities have been developed and there's not so much brush land around the way that used to be, I think probably be a big reason why we cut down on some fires, and that was, I know one of the reasons why Chief Gear said, you know, maybe it's not, ma- you know, maybe it, it's okay to, you know, have the legal fireworks 'cause we don't have so much, um, uh, sagebrush around, and then also, uh, the, the changes we made in reducing the height of the, uh, of the way, how far they go up and stuff like that. But I would venture to say that, uh, and again, I had mixed emotions, because as I was sitting there, I'd see all the beautiful parties going on, uh, watching the, the good fireworks go on, then, then there was a series of the illegal ones, and everyone, one whenever went, oh, you know, there's somebody's uh, household whose dogs are gonna be crying and Tim's is gonna be complaining, you know, something like that, but, um, unfortunately, I think it's mainly the adults who are buying these, and the adults know, in my opinion, at least ninety percent of them know if it's legal or not already. My suggestion would be, um, you know, as we had the National Night Out and as these, uh, uh, community blocks, um, you know, work all year long to keep their community safe, just maybe during that time, during the Fourth of July, they can, you know, maybe we can even buy signs and put them at those community block leaders places, or somewhere in those communities to say, look, you know, let's keep, let's keep our community safe, let's make sure our fireworks are legal, and let's have a, a great time, that type of thing. Instead of just, you know, forcing that we're gonna go and give you all these big fines if, if we catch you, which I'm all for it, if we can prove it, let's do it, you know, but, um, but that's really, that, that's really, as I was thinking about this today, that's really what I came up with is, you know, i- if we're, we're working hard to keep our community safe as, as a community, you know, maybe those community leaders, those block, the community block leaders can maybe put up a sign and just, hey, guys, you know what, let, let's keep our block safe and fun, let, let's make sure we stay legal. Would be my suggestion, but thank you for the information, and I think this is important, and I'm looking forward to some more, you know, statistical points that we can, uh, go with.
Thank you. Mr. Mel?
Uh, thank you, and I appreciate the presentation as well. Um, I know on the Fourth of July, Councilwoman, um, Blanchier Bros. was, uh, and myself, sorry about that. Uh, we're out with the different police force doing their ride-alongs, and, uh, I know, so we had the big difficulty of, we'd come across, we'd come down the road, we'd see them, and then by the time the cruiser actually got there, there would be like nobody, I mean, they've all gone. I don't know if, uh, if bicycles or if there's another way, but I mean, I was shocked on how, uh, time after time after time, we would just come around the corner and we could see this stuff going off, and by the time we got there, I mean, two blocks away, nobody, I mean, we even checked behind cars, everybody swore up and down, it wasn't them, but here two minutes earlier, it was a whole group of people, uh, has there been any kind of talk about bicycles, or is that even an option, I mean, in the areas that are really, I mean, we were doing the sixty-eight area where it was just continually going off, is, is that possible?
Well, right now, our bicycle patrol is dedicated to the river, um, function, the, down there in Wade Park. And so, it'd be a man, a matter of, uh, allocating resources differently, uh, it just depends on where, where that would be needed. Uh, right now, we see it's a, a big advantage to have them down in Wade Park, uh, because it is such a large area to patrol and trying to keep everybody safe during that time.
Okay. I appreciate that, I just, no, it was really frustrating to see it go off and you get there and everybody's gone, so it seemed like they were watching for the cruisers and that, uh.
Sure.
Ms. Barajas?
I can just add to that, um, yes, I was out there, uh, on patrol. Um, one of the incidents in particular, we had given out a citation to this individual, and, uh, we confisc- well, officer confiscated, uh, uh, probably two hundred dollars worth of illegal, um, fireworks. He knew there was something else going on there, so we went around the block, we parked on the side under a tree, and sure enough, within five minutes, there goes another illegal firework. So we came back around, and what he showed the officer was a packaging for a legal, uh, firework, but it just popped different. And so, maybe it's something in the packaging as well, that, uh, doing the inspections, you could go back and verify, hey, you know, did, is, is it properly packaged, or maybe it was slipped in a different container or something, who knows? But, you know, going back to doing the inspections and, and handing out those, uh, very visible, um, flyers of what is legal to the vendors, to the sellers, that might help with controlling the illegal pieces. Just a thought, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And just prepping up a bit too, I think the common theme here, we can't mista- mistake this, is council's on board with doing this and trying to manage more closely again next year, I think that's the larger theme, and individual ideas are all healthy and everything. So we're, we're committed to another year of trying to make it better, uh, and, and I also think too, Mr. Martinez's thoughts of balancing that, um, our basis of our nation, and, and, uh, people can enjoy the Fourth of July, it's a delicate balancing act and, uh, more egregious violators, I would imagine if we see more, uh, citations issued, assuming there is still an issue, uh, probably, probably makes sense, so we appreciate both the Police Department, Fire Department, and staff perspective on, uh, trying to manage, uh, this and also let people have a good time. So, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
With that, we're gonna just move on, and we're gonna hit kind of a section of three, and I, the magic words, we've got CDBG and all sorts of acronyms, but this has to do with urban development efforts for C, D, and E on the, on the next. And the first item is related to the Community Development Block Grant Annual Work Plan and allocations. And who's presenting that this evening?
I will, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Council, and, um, as, I think as Council is, is fully aware, Pasco is an entitlement city, which means that we do not have to compete for an annual block grant allocation, we get that from HUD, um, without competition. So this, uh, coming year, we expect to have a little over one point one million dollars total, which includes our roughly seven hundred thousand dollar yearly allocation, and then some program income and some, uh, uh, reallocated funds that were, um, added to, uh, this year's process because of either things that were underspent, or, uh, actually, it came from the, uh, Section one oh eight, which we did not need to pay last year, but we will this coming year, so we have about one point one million. Uh, the Planted Commission is Pasco's Block Grant Advisory Committee, and they've held two public hearings on the block grant process and the funding requests, and has forwarded the recommendations as, uh, identified in the resolution, which turned out to be very similar to last year's recommendation, and it does include our first Section one oh eight payment of approximately two hundred thousand dollars. So, um, if Council has questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer those. Uh, the Planted Commission heard, I think, um, nine presentations on funding projects at the first public meeting in June, and they, they, uh, took those to heart and then made the recommendations in Ju- in July.
Questions, discussion? No lights right on way, so put that on the agenda for consideration, too, and I, Mr. White, also, it looks like there may be some extra contingency thing related to, uh, whether or not we do get some funds, so there's a, it's essentially a prioritized list, uh, of, of things to expend the money on.
It, it is, and the contingencies help us, um, in case, as we, as happened this year, we have unspent monies or reallocated monies.
Perfect. With that on the agenda, we'll move on to Section, uh, D on the agenda, Home Annual Work Plan and allocations, you also, Mr. White?
Yes, sir. This is also a block grant program, but it's dedicated to, uh, housing needs. Um, the, uh, cities of Pasco, Kennewick, and Richland have grouped together to form a consortium for receiving home funds from HUD. And Pasco shares approximately two hundred thousand dollars this year, because we have some, uh, program income from down payment assistance loans that have been paid off. Uh, normally, we get about a hundred and ten thousand or so. Uh, the recommendation also includes a contingency project, and, uh, Council heard, um, a presentation on that contingency project from Catholic Family Charities, uh, maybe about a month ago now. Um, but, um, the Home Consortium also has a dedicated source of funding called Community Housing Development Organization, or CHODO, funds, and those are able to be used by a certified community housing development organization, of which there's only one in the tri-cities, and that's Habitat for Humanity, and currently, they're, they're, they're up to here with projects, they can't handle another one. The Catholic Family Charities would be an eligible, uh, housing organization, so that's why they were added as a contingency. However, the, uh, home, uh, funds are, um, dedicated to the Down Payment Assistance Program by an agreement that all three cities signed in twenty-ten, that's in effect until twenty-nineteen, or, uh, yeah, tw- through this year. So, um, those will be offered for down payment assistance for first-time homebuyers.
Questions, Mr. Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I have more of a kind of education question for my, for myself. Um, the, uh, who, who, uh, determines the allocation of, uh, how much, uh, would go into, uh, helping someone with their down payment assistance? Would that be the consortium, or consortium, or would that be the state or the, the federal?
No, it, it's the consortium, and there, there's guidelines for that, um, and, and Pasco was the last of the tri-cities to, uh, ha- start to have a problem with qualifying first-time homebuyers for down payment assistance, because the price of housing has risen, and it, it, it used to be a flat ten thousand dollar maximum,
Right.
but now we're limiting it to, uh, up to twenty percent, so that we can actually get the money out the door, because home prices are rising. Um, and, and, uh, w- we, we anticipate being able to use the money, but we had to just change the formula slightly.
So there's certain adjustments for, for, for those, um, pretty dramatic rising costs, really?
Uh, well, if not dramatic, at least steady.
Yeah, I mean, uh, homes that were going for a hundred, uh, eight years ago now, two hundred, you know, some of the Habitat for Humanity homes are at two, uh, over, over two, I mean, you know, that's a, you're putting a percentage down on, on a home. So I'm, I was just curious who made that decision, if it was federally mandated, or if it was.
Yeah, it's not mandated.
I'm curious if there's some, some adjustments that happen, and how often they.
They're local, and they can, they can happen during any program year.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be curious just for my, for my own education, kind of where they're at.
And just, uh, so Council's aware, towards the end of September, I think in the last workshop, we'll, staff will be presenting, uh, affordable housing, uh, workshop item, so that we can kind of get our arms around the block grant program, uh, some recent state legislation, and just some things that we're, we've been doing administrative, or administratively, and through the Planted Commission and Council for code amendments that we believe will help minimize some of the rise in housing prices.
And as you know too, it's, uh, these are fairly unlimited funds, and they're targeted, but they're important, uh, somebody might be on the bubble on some. Somebody might be on the bubble on something and it's that last little bit that are able to make the difference, so. Uh, he's always, uh, know that these programmatic funds are important to push through, so. Uh, I'm hearing consensus to put that on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. White. And I believe, I'm guessing, you're also gonna tell us about the stabilization, uh, neighborhood program.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this one's a little different. Uh, the, uh, NSP program or neighborhood stabilization program happened in two thousand and eight. And, uh, Pascal received about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to, um. Help alleviate the, uh, bad effects that foreclosures had on neighborhoods. And we had a, a very good success with that program. We recovered, um, I think seventeen homes, sixteen homes, foreclosed homes. Provided down payment assistance to twelve home buyers and we actually purchased and rehabilitated four homes. So the grant was closed out. But, um, through sales of homes that had been helped with that zero percent deferred loan. Uh, we have program income. And HUD rules say that that has to be added back into the block grant program and used for the same thing that it was originally intended for. So that's what this, uh, agenda item concerns and the accompanying resolution will. Allow us to continue the program according to HUD guidelines.
So an extra hundred K, uh, or so, you know, in this case, so this is. Successful program and a churn able to use for, for something else in the future. Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. White. Um, a question on this, so. This was a successful program, it helped, it helped to make sure that some of the houses that were, um. Were a problem within our community were able to get rehabilitated and back out into, onto the open market. Um, when perhaps the private sector wasn't interested in, um, taking care of those homes, right?
That's right, these were homes that definitely would, would not pencil out for the private sector.
Um, is that, that, we still have homes like that within our community? Is, is that also correct?
Um, we may, of course. I don't know that, uh, they exist to the extent they did roughly ten years ago.
I'd be interested if, if we have some more spots like that, cause that can really drag down a whole neighborhood and, and the home values and quality of life of an entire neighborhood. I'd be really interested if we were, if we had more, more homes like this, if there's any options we would have going forward to help rectify some of that situation. Um, again, we saw this to be a very successful program where, where money was able to be used and turned back into, um, valuable. Community properties, so I'd be interested to hear, hear more about that in the future if there's any thoughts you have.
Yeah, we do, and, and just as a, a quick note, um, Councilman Maloney. The, uh, code enforcement division actually helps notify the block grant. Uh, administrator of homes a- along those lines. So it's through the, it, it's indirect, but we do have eyes on the street, so to speak. So when something like this comes up that might be eligible, uh, for either rental assistance or rehabilitation. We, we generally hear about it pretty, pretty rapidly.
Excellent. I know we have a limited amount of funds and availability for, for do some of those things, so if we, if, if this is becoming, if this is a problem that's bigger than we have access to right now. Just be interested to hear what scale the problem is in the future, that's, um, in case we need to, or in case it'd be in our best interest to help, um. More systemat- systemically, uh, deal with this problem. Thank you.
So I think that one's also going on the agenda for consideration as well. And, uh, we'll move to section F on the agenda, uh, related to a code amendment for street improvements on RS twelve. And RS twenty zoning districts. Mr. White, you're up again, sir.
Thank you. Switching gears, this, um, has to do with a code amendment for street improvements in our RS twelve and RS twenty zoning districts. Right now, those are optional, uh, through various sections in our municipal code. They're not required, uh, curb, gutter, sidewalk and streetlights are not required as they are in all of our other residential districts. The, uh, proposed ordinance would remove that option and require the installation of street improvements in new developments. As, uh, we believe, uh, that over time at least. There will be an increase in mobility options for residents. Increased implementation of the complete street ordinance that council adopted last year. And then, of course, increased, uh, safety for the citizens. The planning commission considered this at, uh, at least one, it might have even been two workshops and, uh, has. Forward, uh, forwarded a recommendation, uh, of approval to city council.
And just to help me out too, this princ- in principle, this is on new developments is not necessarily retrofitting. Something that's already been developed.
It's not. Uh, the RS twelve and RS twenty zoning districts are only about, uh, maybe fifteen percent of the entire residential. Um, array in Pasco. However, they're the majority of zoning right in the Riverview or former Riverview area. Um, the, um. Uh, existing subdivision code provides, uh, deference to the CD engineer. For, uh, making sure that street improvements are not either impractical. Or not necessary, and that would certainly be the case, for example, of someone doing a. On an existing glide, if someone was, you know, received a permit to construct a single family home. It's not going to be appropriate for them to put curb, gutter, sidewalk and streetlights on that isolated lots, but it would be. For a new subdivision or new plat.
Uh, and or, uh, arterials or major.
Or arterials, school rush, certainly.
Okay, and so that's that mix, okay. Questions or discussion? Mr. Serrano?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. White. This is probably a little bit more of Mr. Worley's alley. Um, when, uh, Ma- Mary Heather and Maria present, they tend to talk about how the complete street ordinances. Can sometimes funnel money back in through grant funding. Um, do you, do you think this will have a tremendous impact in there or, or can you kind of? Semi-crystal ballist? I'm, I'm not asking you to kind of make a wild guess, but. It seems like if nothing else, it'll at least help.
It works and it helps us with our grant applications to show that we are a complete street city. So that really does help, yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Ma- Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Mr. White. Uh, one of the questions, one of the, I guess, one of the, I, benefits I see of this is we've, we've talked and we've seen. All of us, I think, have seen, um, struggles that sometimes our kids have walking to school and getting around from their neighborhoods to. Without having to, to be on a street. And so I, I see this as, as definitely being a good, good way of helping patch up some of those holes as we more densely. Slightly more densely populate some of these areas here. Obviously, this isn't, we're not talking about high density residential here, we're talking about still very. Uh, relative low density, um, areas here, so I'm definitely in favor of this. Thank you.
And, uh, just, uh, since I think myself and Mr. Martinez were battle scars of annexation. Uh, to just remind, uh, folks, uh, this is not gonna be one where city are initiating development efforts. But this is if developers, owners of property do development efforts, uh, that there'll be a increased standard to be more complete in streets, so. Um, just there is, that is a subtle distinction and, and, uh, if you ever do annexation as a, as a group, uh, it's. You, you'll, you'll know that's an important point. With that, uh, on the agenda, and we're gonna go on slightly different subject, but it seems we need to do some process water reuse facility cleanup. Mr. Worley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, I seem to recall that you had a pretty odiferous meeting. A few meetings back where some information was brought up related to the process water reuse facility. And I'm glad to say that staff has finally gone through a process of identifying. A company that can, uh, help us eliminate the majority of that odor. And get rid of the sediment within the process water reuse facility sedimentation pond. Um, I have a presentation that I'd like to go with, um, but I don't have any controls.
Me- mechanical, nor do I, but, uh, uh, as you will go through it verbally, I'm guessing, uh. They're, hey. Mr. White's, uh, working through that, I think, so, uh, uh, if you want to start off and I bet, I'm gonna bet there's visual aids will come miraculously.
If the visual aids comes, that's great, that'll just make the present, the information I'll share with you just a little easier to understand. Um, as we have shared with council in the past, uh, the, one of the ponds within. Our reuse facility is currently being stored, or being used to store sediment. Uh, historically, all of the water that came from the six processors that we, uh, provide service to. All of the sediment that came with that flow automatically went right through the, uh, reuse facility onto the farm fields. And that had a detrimental impact to the crops that were being raised because it was. Filled with sediment and organics and inorganic solids and all that kind of stuff. It coated the, uh, crops. And then they had to be washed off with well water and all kinds of stuff, so it was, and we had a really. Big problem operationally because the sediment would cause the nozzles on. The pivots to clog up and it was a constant maintenance nightmare. So, um. It was decided back in twenty thirteen to build a sedimentate or a clarifier. Basically a concrete box that allowed the water to flow through, slow down, drop out the sediment. And it, it wasn't until twenty sixteen that they realized that the design of the clarifier was too small. For the amount of sediment that was being received from the processors. I don't think anybody really knew at that time how much sediment was literally coming in the water from each of the processors. And so they added a bunch of sand traps to the process flow and. Trapped more sediment and currently we have twelve of these concrete sand filters along with the clarifier. And we are capturing a lot of sediment. Well, that sediment has to go somewhere. And right now that sediment, when we clean the clarifier, when we clean the sand pits, that sediment is pulled out and put into the storage pond. And so now it's been since twenty sixteen, we've been filling it in, uh, and it is full now. And so, um. We believe that that is the major cause of the odor problem is the sediment in the water sitting in that pond for years and years. And when it gets warm, it just heats up and just turns pretty bad. Oh, there it is. We've got it. And so, um, what we did was staff. Hey there, now there. Staff contacted a couple, uh, we looked at different options on how to address this issue. And one of the things that we came up with was to contact a couple of companies that we know provide sediment removal for other agencies. And so we contacted Bioterra Environmental Engineering and Natural Solutions. And we asked them to give us proposals on what it would take for them to come in and remove the sediment. From our pond and dispose of it in an effective ecology approved manner. And these were the only two companies that we were aware of that were local, sort of local. Close enough anyway to make it viable and also had a disposal site that was approved by ecology. Cause we felt that that was important. We didn't want to take this material and just have it disposed of anywhere they want. And so, um, we, uh, reviewed it, we interviewed them, we talked to Bioterra about their process. And we determined that they were probably the lowest price for the work that we needed to have done. And so we are proposing in your packet and for discussion tonight is a contract with Bioterra. To clean out the pond and, um, the. Processors and the city both agree that the pond needs to be cleaned. Uh, the processors are agreeing to pay for it, cause they know that this is an operational item. The sediment came from their processing facilities and so they, we had a discussion with them at our last quarterly meeting. And they realized that, yes, this is a cost. Grimway's not in that yet because they don't discharge to our reuse facility as of, uh, today. Um, we discussed the pond cleaning at the council's May thirteenth workshop. And we are hoping, based on our discussion tonight, to be able to bring this to council next week. And you can see in that picture that that's a copy of the solids that are in the pond that need to be removed. So with that, um, in your packet, you have a co- a draft contract. Now you'll see in this one, it is actually signed by a representative from Bioterra, but we have since modified the contract a little bit. We've added some clarifying language about the requirement to pay prevailing wages per the state requirements. And we've also added some insurance requirements, uh, per our insurance carrier to make sure that our contractor, in case anything goes wrong. He has insurance to cover anything that might happen at the reuse facility. So next week, we will bring you a, an updated copy of that. And I understand Bioterra has already signed the updated copy and it'll be ready for your execution. The other item that's in your packet is a memo that, uh, was written up to give better information about how Bioterra. Is planning to get the sediment removed from the pond. And one of the things that I appreciated about the way that they're going to approach it. Is that they're going to be using a mechanism that will allow more or less dredging of the material from below the surface of the pond. And the key to that is that it won't stir up the surface of the pond as much. And hopefully will keep the odors down while they are removing the sediment from the pond. So we felt really good about that considering that we've got some neighbors that have been concerned about the odor problem for a long time. So, uh, hopefully that information was helpful and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And, uh, I think you hit on it, just on the last two, talking about the constituency groups and I imagine also the irrigators are familiar with this, is that. Has this, uh, thought this, this plan been, uh, uh, brought up in some form to, to folks who do live or work or. Out in that area?
Yes, as a matter of fact, um, as soon as we were able to get, uh, sort of an agreement, uh, draft contract with Bioterra and agreed to go that route. We noted, we sent a, an email to the three property owner members that were up here previously. And told them about the workshop tonight and the contract, uh, hopefully being approved next week. And so I was hoping they'd come tonight, um, and then we also sent, uh, an email out to all of our processor partners. And let them know that we were bringing this to council tonight and that we were moving forward with what we discussed at our last. Quarterly meeting with them to make them aware that this will be an operational cost that will be added to their invoices, uh, later this year.
Uh, and then as a practical matter, then, uh, if this is something that potentially has to be done on a periodic basis. This might be then translate to some program, uh, via the processors to minimize that opportunity. Because it's still about one point three million dollar estimated cost that the processors are gonna incur, uh, to, to pay for this.
Yes, I think what the idea will be is that, we, you remember we had, uh, Robin Nelson of Pace Engineers come and give a presentation. On the facility plan and the engineering study that was done at the reuse facility. And in that upgrade to the facility will be improved solids handling plan. And so we won't be in this same situation as soon as the improvements are made to the reuse facility. We will be drawing those solids out a lot better and being able to dispose of them in a much better way than we are currently able to do.
Thank you for reminding me. Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in the cleaning proposal, I just have a quick question, um. You know, as long as it's not freezing, where they can apply the, the dredge material to wherever they're going. Um, I, I guess I'm just curious as in the removal process and I, and it explained a little bit. How, how are we gonna avoid the order as they're removing the sediment? Is there a special process for that?
There isn't. The, the only real special process is the pumping system that. Uh, Bioterra is proposing to use to actually transfer the sediment from the pond to their trucks. Initially, the material will be very wet, so it'll be easier to pump. And they are planning to pump those into tanker trucks, which will be closed. So that will help a lot. That means when they haul it off, they won't be leaving a trail of odor behind them as they go. Uh, once they get through the more wet material, then it'll start getting drier, it'll start getting harder to pump. That's when they will bring in a different type of pump system, kind of like a dredge pump and do something different. And then they'll probably have to put that in those, uh, side dump trucks. And it will be open, you know, hopefully they have covers on them to help keep some of the odor down, which I think by state law, they're supposed to cover those. So hopefully that will help keep the odor down as well.
Okay, well, I appreciate it and I, uh, I hope this is a, a resolve to the issue and, you know, their. Quality of life, how it's affecting them out there, so, um. No, I'm looking forward to it. Hopefully we have a mild winter until they get it all out and, and we can get this done as soon as possible. Thank you.
Mr. Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so what, what is the timeframe we're looking at for this project to be completed?
It's gonna take a while. Um, they are anxious to get started. They will need some time to get equipment and get pumps ordered and get them, uh, delivered and get them installed and they need to get a system set up. At the reuse facility, but we think it will take, um, what did we say, um, about six months. Uh, just merely based on the volume of sediment in the pond and how many trips they will be able to make per day.
And then, uh, what, what I was hearing you say is that, um, we're sharpening up, sharpening up practices so that. We don't have this problem, uh, to the same degree again, and so, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, to, at the next level of improvements that we make at the reuse facility, there will be improved processes. Um, we will be coming to council here shortly with a design contract. We will be coming to council here shortly with a design contract for the improvements at the reuse facility. We're just getting ready right now to put an RFQ out, which is a request for qualifications, to hire a consultant to design the improvements to the reuse facility. And so once we get those improvements designed, we'll put it out to bid, and it'll be constructed. It will take a couple of years to get it designed and get it built before we have those new processes in place.
Thank you. Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when I'm looking at this thing, I do see this as being a potential high-risk sort of endeavor. And the reason why I say that is because, well, anytime you see a pretty big differential between two bids, you know, always makes me wonder exactly what's going on there. And I appreciate the, the additional information and the addition of the insurance portion. I was concerned about having an outside operator in our process water reuse facility with the other operations we're going on, including construction, right? It's ongoing and, and the potential impacts of that. So I appreciate the additional insurance and the, it seems like there's a pretty, a pretty tight set of indemnification and such. As well as, again, kind of the transfer of risk over to them in terms of, we're not telling you what it is, we're just telling you, you got to get rid of it as long as it complies with your permit. So a question I have on, regarding specifically that is, what potential scenarios may the materials violate their permit? Do we have any foreseeable instances where this is material they can't haul away?
We asked that question, and they said they don't believe there's anything in the material that would violate their permit for disposal. And I think the reason they say that is because they have been, this company or the previous company prior to Bioterra coming into existence, they took over another company that was doing the same thing. And they've been doing this for fifteen years. And all of our sediments are coming from food processors, so it's mostly inorganic material that is coming from the vegetables that are being harvested from the fields. So we don't believe there's anything that would violate any permit requirements.
Okay, great. And so the only other thing I could see was, and, and just curious about is, when I'm looking at the actual solids, my understanding is, okay, so they're, they're going to pump what they can and then haul away the rest, unless the pumping doesn't work, and then they're going to be dredging the whole thing from the top, right? Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, that's not quite as I understand it. They seem to be able to bring in a different pump that will pump the drier sediment, and it's especially designed pumped for just that purpose. And they are responsible for all of it. All we pay is the amount of, the weight of the material that they haul to their disposal site. The rest of it is up to them.
All right. Well, frankly, it's, it's, most of the risk is on them. So I, I appreciate the structure of this contract and that we have a private company willing to do this work for us. Best of luck to them. Thank you.
I think that puts on a good note. Let's put that on the agenda for consideration then. Appreciate, Mr. Worley, that there's a lot of moving parts to this, and I appreciate too, this being related to some, being good neighbors where possible, and I appreciate that.
You bet.
With that, we are through section four. On the agenda, we go to five miscellaneous discussion. Any thoughts, Mr. Zabel, this evening?
Nothing this evening.
Okay. How about council? Miscellaneous discussion? If not, we go to number six. There is need for an executive session. An executive session is about establishing sales price or lease amount of real estate. It's expected to last about ten minutes. It'll be attended by city manager and the city attorney. At the conclusion of the executive session, I'll reconvene council, adopt any action council may desire, and then adjourn the meeting. So if it's about, I'm going to say, just from round numbers, we're pretty close to eight fifteen. We're going to be until eight twenty-five. And we'll be back in about ten minutes. And we are back from executive session. We do our best to predict how much time we're going to be, but we're a little early. So with no other items before council, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.